All right. Colorado Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting of May 5th, 2025. Roll call, please.
All right, we got Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Board Member Tommy Roulette.
Present.
And we got the President Kelly Milan absent, but we got Tony Chair in the meeting.
Here.
And City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
And myself.
All righty. Do I hear any announcements from the board?
I have none.
I have none either.
All right, move on to approval of the previous minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tommy, second.
Second.
Taken by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
The minute's passed. New business, Mark Fetty EMS Lit Contract Amendment.
Yeah, I was taking a look through the EMS contact or contract here for the lit money. And I noticed it said there was just one little small change. And I got ahold of their attorney and they said it wouldn't be a problem. They sent it through with the county and made the amendment to it. And I just want to basically get this board's approval to amend it. Basically, and all it is, is saying that we had to have a separate bank account for the EMS lit money. When we initially set up the fund, we basically, they told us that we just had to have a separate fund, not a separate bank account. So I just want to, that's the only change in there.
All right. Do I have a motion for EMS Lit Contract Amendment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tommy, and that's second.
Second.
Taken by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Amendment passed. Mr. Cook, request us solicit quotes for Todd Creech Park Pickleball.
Yes, sir. So here today to request approval to solicit quotes for the Todd Creech Park Pickleball courts. So the plan is to install two pickleball courts in the grass space next to the baseball storage area down there. Two courts with perimeter fencing and then the asphalt playing surface, so.
Will that be coming out of non-reverting parks, do you know, by chance?
I believe it's capital.
Capital project.
Parks capital.
It was budgeted for this year.
Yep.
Are we totally wrapped up with the project, Lolo Hill?
Uh, no, they're actually coming in this week to do the servicing. They were there last week putting in the.
I saw them up there working.
Yep.
Like it was the end of it.
Working on the anchors and stuff for the nets, but they'll be here this week to do the coating. So get that one wrapped up.
All right. Any other questions?
No, sir.
I have none.
If I have a motion for the coach to go out for quotes for the pickleball park?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Brett, second by Tommy, all in favor?
Aye.
Go out for quotes. Up next is Chief Snyder, and I don't see him in the building. Tommy, should we go ahead and do this or just put it on the next meeting?
I would put that on the next meeting. I don't want to misspoke or speak on anything like that.
So moved.
Motion table by Brett, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Tommy, all in favor?
Aye.
That's tabled. In an old business, Diesel Mechanic.
Yes, we had, yeah, we had a start date, I believe it was here in May. The gentleman that we hired cannot start until June, so I think we moved that to June 9th.
We don't need a motion on that, though.
I don't think so. I think it was just more informational.
All righty.
So we moved it back.
Do I have any other old business?
No, sir.
I have none.
Take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy.
Second.
Taken by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Move on to the Utility Board Meeting of May 5th, 2025.
All right, we got Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we got City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
President Kelly Milan absent, and myself.
All right, do I have any announcements from the board?
Have none.
No announcements, take a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Dylan, that's second.
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Looks like there's nothing under new business. Does anybody have anything you want to bring up? I don't see nothing under old business. Somebody wants to bring something up? Nope. Okay, uh, motion for the review and discussion of claims for board approval.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy, second.
Second.
Taken by Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Motion by Brett.
I'll second.
Second by Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy.
Second.
Motion by Lenny, second by Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a quick utility board meeting. Everybody was doing. All right, I want to bring the City Lawrenceburg Council Meeting of May 5th, 2025.
All right, we got Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tom Roulette.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan absent, and myself.
All ready? Uh, announcements? Do I hear your announcements from the board? Board reports, streets, alley, and curves downtown, Tony Abbott. Uh, everything's going fine down here, like I say, they're working on High Street and they'll be doing Elm Nest. On Lolo Hill, Lenny.
Everything looks good.
Finance, Mr. Bondurant.
No report, sir.
Playgrounds and parks, Dylan.
Parks have been busy, um, waiting to hear back on whether or not there was any UV warranty for the parks. But we'll report on that further at the next meeting.
Fire Department, Mr. Roulette.
No report.
All right. Moving on to approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Had a chance to look at them. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Dylan to approve.
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. You guys have your committee reports should be with your agenda. Move on to new business, uh, the story walk. This was supposed to be Mayor Milan's, but you've got it in your agenda. Apparently, the library wants to put story tables around the pond at the park. I guess kids can stop and read stories and it's supposed to be pretty nice. That's about all I know of it.
The only, the only question I would have is, once these are put in place, are we the city responsible for maintaining the condition of them?
Well, from what I'm reading on it, it says they maintain them. But I have a question, what about a flood? I mean, will those things be damaged during a flood? Because that water gets pretty high down there on heavy rains.
I thought they was supposed to put them in like, um, concrete or something where they'd be stable, where they can't float or get out.
Well, they're not going to float, but I don't know if the water would damage them.
Oh, I don't know.
They don't leave that plastic or not, but.
The message from the mayor says they pay and we install and they would maintain them.
They will do the maintenance and maintenance.
We're just installing them.
Yeah.
That being the case, if no one else has got any questions, I would entertain a motion to allow the story walk.
I got a motion by Tommy to allow the story walk, so I have a second.
I second that.
Second by Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Speed tables. Apparently, there's been some damage to a fire truck on some of our speed humps. So I think they're, they would like to put speed tables everywhere. No more speed humps or, what's the other one? That's speed hump, uh.
Speed bump.
Speed bump.
Speed bump, speed hump, and speed tables.
Well, speed lump.
They want to go to all speed tables. I think there's 11 total.
Mr. Massey, could you elaborate on that any at all, please? Thank you.
Uh, me and Austin and, um, we had a meeting back in the spring before we set the temporaries out and he wanted to know the locations. And the mayor wanted permanent ones at the Lolo Hill Park. And then we agreed to go ahead and do all the temporaries in permanence, so we don't have to remove them. And I did bring up the ones that were, uh, leaf spring friendly. There's one over on, uh, where was that at, Tommy?
I can't remember when you was telling me, that's not the one on Lake, was it?
No. It's over by Bell Tare Casino in Kentucky. I mean, the fire trucks can, can move through it.
Is that the one that's got the gap in it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I do remember that.
But we think we're just going to go with the regular tables, uh, just so we don't have to remove them in the spring and put them out in the fall, vice versa.
But these are not as high as what we have now down on Tate Street.
Anywhere, right.
And in front of the.
The one in front of the school is the main, about the main one we like to copy off of.
So basically, the mayor's wanting to go out for quotes for these, I guess?
Yes.
Talking about.
Per, per location.
So they're wanting to go with the solid ones, like, right here by the, um,
By the pool.
Pool and stuff?
Yep.
Instead of the one that's got the gap in it?
Yep. Does that create more chaos for you guys when you're shoveling snow? I, I was a, I didn't like them in the beginning, but with snow plows, they just float right over them, so. Now, the street sweeper, he don't like the rubber ones because they're tearing his head apart on the sweeper head. But with the tables, they just float over top of it.
I can see where that.
Right, because it's such a high angle.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to go out for quotes on them, or have you got?
I believe that's what he's.
I believe Austin was looking into quotes, yes.
So this is more informational?
Yeah.
Yes, so, so anything?
Do we need a motion to go out for quotes, Dale?
You can do a motion to allow him to solicit the quotes, yeah.
Before we do that, Fetty, where would those funds come from, do you know, off the top of your head?
Uh, there's, you basically, local roads and streets or MVH. I mean, one of those two funds could probably handle that this year. I mean, I, I don't know what the numbers are. I mean, that's, I guess that's why we have to basically take a look at.
The temporary, yeah.
Yeah. Get the quotes first and then we'll see where we get it from. If I have a motion to give them permission to go out for quotes for speed tables, 11 of them?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lenny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
You can go out for quotes, bud.
Thank you.
Mr. Quicksaw, emergency repair.
As you, you all got the quotes in front of you, my rollback blowed up and we need to fix it.
That's good.
So the last quote that you've given us, Rodney, was, uh, from the NAP if everyone received one of them, which was substantially lower for a complete engine where the other one was, what, 43?
Yeah.
Almost 44,000, this is 26,000.
But that don't include no injectors, the wiring harness for injectors, oil pan, valve covers, EGR cooler, or nothing.
What was I saying, Rodney, you could use the ones off the old one?
We could try.
I mean.
That's the one quote from plus for 26.
Yeah.
That's all new.
The worst case scenario will be the 43.
Yeah.
But they won't know until they get into it.
Right.
Correct.
And there was two trucks in front of us two weeks ago and we don't know where we're at now.
So are we comparing 43 and the other one of 25? That's the same comparison?
Something different, something larger.
Probably.
Does more.
Yeah.
The larger quote includes the block and all that. The smaller quote, they're going to use our block, put a new head on it, new injectors, re-sleeve it.
But you're not sure they can use your block yet because they haven't.
Right, that's, that's the problem we got. They won't know until they tear into it.
Yeah.
So we could probably set the NAP one aside and just go with the one you have from International.
Correct.
You really won't know anything until they tear this engine apart.
Correct.
So it could be the minimum of a 25 or the higher of the 20, 43.
Correct. Or somewhere in between.
And you, would you be taking that out of motor vehicle highway or where would you be?
Probably that line, right, as a repair.
Comparing these two then?
Gillian was supposed to find us some more money.
That includes a lot of the work.
Okay.
All right, that's what I'm needing to know.
So the 43 quote would be a maximum price and we would hope to land somewhere in the middle of 26 and 43?
Correct.
But the other one, if it doesn't need a block or anything, if the block's not hurt, not warped, what have you, you'd go with it, you could go with it. Now, would they honor something like that here too, or they just going to trash it all?
The NAPA quotes without the block. Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, but what if it doesn't need the block?
That quote's already.
That's the ones that we have from International.
For 25, right, but you don't know.
They won't know until they tear into it.
Get it tore apart.
Right.
But we're setting, you're just dropping the NAP one as a comparison.
Right, right.
Really don't want to go that route. Because you may have to put more money into that, as you stated, with the injectors and whatnot.
I can understand that, there are a lot of, that's a lot of money with them injectors.
That, we're getting into our busy season with towing with Music on the River. Uh, they towed one yesterday at the car show. Uh, I believe either CNR got it or Disbeck got it at their charge instead of us doing it for free.
I seen Disbeck was down there. All righty, hearing any other questions? What would you guys like to do?
I'd make a motion that they take it to International and see what they can do with it. And then just report back to us if you can, which way they had to go, so we know. I mean, you've already got the money budgeted, so it's a shame we have to spend that much, but we.
Right.
We need to roll back. Not only use that for towing.
Hauling equipment, anything.
Use that for hauling equipment there.
Everything.
Well, yeah.
And thing from stages.
Shame, it really surprises me there's nothing in the system that when that engine gets that hot, it shuts down like maybe the cooling fan quit working, the clutch cooling fan or something, it just overheated.
That's, that's what I'm assuming.
Which they would determine that when they get it.
Right.
What do you guys do, you let them sit quite a bit and idle?
Well, when they're, when it's, you're hooking something up and then they're loading stuff on it, it's just sitting there idling. Because you got to use the hydraulics and the winch and all that.
Nobody, nobody seen it getting hot?
No, they was outside the vehicle.
Yeah. Well, it's got to be fixed.
Well, we don't need to, or don't anything, just.
I think it was just more informational, wasn't it? I mean, he's got the money budgeted.
So you're not sticking shock.
Just to have it on the record, like prove the expenditure.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion then.
I'll second.
By Tommy, second by Dylan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else in the new business? See, does anybody else have anything?
Casa.
All right.
Tony, okay.
Move on to old business? There's nothing there, I'll see. Casa, ma'am, I didn't get your name, though.
Karen Good.
Very good.
Yeah. Yeah, hi, I'm Karen Good and I serve Dearborn County Casa. I'm their youth coordinator and this is Lily New. And she's a senior at Lawrenceburg High School. And we just came to thank you for your support of Casa. Um, and Lily's going to show you these pictures and tell you a little bit about the youth summit that actually Mayor Mulan, um, he spoke at, um, and we had March the 5th.
If you will turn that so the people can see it too, will you, please?
Yeah.
Kind of neat.
So we had the event, it was really, it was a good success. We had about like 500 eighth graders. 600. 600. Eighth graders from schools all around. And, uh, we taught them about how it is important that they can make their own decisions in life. And we had a bunch of games and we ate food and we listened to music. And it was really good success and we all had fun and it was just a good time. And we just wanted to thank you for your support.
Did you say food?
Yes.
I'm all hands.
Yeah. Yeah, so thank you. So Lily is one of 51 students from East Central Lawrenceburg and South Dearborn High School that served Casa this year through our Youth Ambassador Program. Um, and so these teenagers have done an excellent job all year spreading a message of prevention and staying away from drugs and alcohol. So thank you again, City of Lawrenceburg, for your support of Casa, um, here in Dearborn County. And we're excited to see what the Youth Ambassador Program brings even next year, so.
That's good, thank you, that's really great, awesome.
Okay, do I have any comments from the audience?
I do.
Okay, stand up and state your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Wells. I am the Riviera 1 HOA Board President.
And my name's Diane Award and I'm the HOA President of Riviera 2.
So, um, first off, we'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here today. So, uh, so we're here this evening to ask the city's partnership in, in addressing the growing challenge that has become unsustainable financial burden to Riviera. And that is the cost of snow removal and salt during the winter months. This past winter, our HOA was invoiced over $41,000 for snow removal and salting our roads. And, uh, this is a significant and a reoccurring strain on our budget. And when we have to spend the money for that, we have less money on maintenance, for safety, for beautification of our community, and for social events. So, um, the, uh, I have quite a few members here from our community in support of, uh, for what we're asking the city to do. And, um, the HOA residents, the Riviera, supports, um, the city very much in attending the, your events that you have here. You have lots of wonderful events, we love Music on the River. We support the local restaurants and businesses. And we, and we pay, just the Riviera community pays over $18,000 for fire protection in our community, uh, which is on our electric bill. So, um, the Riviera homeowners pay over $564,800 in taxes. And so that tax money obviously helps to support, um, the schools and the other things that, you know, that our taxes do here in the city. So, um, as a condo community, we don't qualify for some of the perks that the people that live down here in the city. Even though we pay the same tax rate, we don't, we don't get the snow removal that they get. There's a program here for, um, for the, um, for the exterior funding, the grants for exterior, the exterior funding that the residents get to apply for, we don't get to because we don't, aren't considered homeowners. And so we don't, you know, and we don't benefit from, you know, the snow removal. So, um, the city set of presidents, when they accepted Three Mile condo community into the city of Lawrenceburg to take, to take, take care of their streets. So, uh, so we're asking the city to consider accepting our community into the city corporation so that you can help, uh, to maintain our streets. And that, and that's what we're here for today, to ask for you to do that. And, um, the one thing about the residents in Riviera is a lot of us are senior citizens. And you know the story, we all live on fixed incomes, right? You've heard that many times. And if you are a senior citizen, you know what I'm talking about. But you know what, we, um, besides that, that, you know, we're very, um, we're very proud and honored that we can have the privilege to go to the polls and vote. So we're, you know, that's the one thing about seniors, they, they vote. So again, we're, we're asking the city to help us out here. And, um, we really appreciate your consideration in this manner. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd entertain a motion that we take this under advisement, have legal counsel look at it as well. Also, if we could, our civil city general foreman, Brad, if you could just take a look at that area too, to see if the snow plows could possibly go up and down that hill because it's a pretty steep hill.
I was going to say.
Yes.
Considering you all just got through reassessing the value of each one of these condos and mine went up over $23,000, I think you very carefully should consider this.
That's not us.
That's, that's.
That's in due with us.
We understand where you're coming from here.
So.
You feel the pain too, right?
Yeah, yeah. I agree with taking it under advisement. What, I, I, I've been up there, I feel like we would be able to plow those roads. Have you been up there at all, Brad? Do you know what those, just off the top of your head, do you think we'd be able to plow those roads? I want to give these folks something to go home with.
What are the tables?
Yeah.
Tables or speed bumps they have up there?
They don't have any.
None, at all?
In there, uh, a law that the streets had to be so wide or something?
Well, I mean.
It depends on streets being up to city spec. This is an issue that we've talked about in the past.
That's why they had a motion to take it under advisement and let's legal counsel look at.
And I, I think that's, I think that's fair for taking them into our corporation. But I, in terms of helping you guys with snowplow removal for next year, is that not something that we'd be able to, to do tonight, Brad? I mean, I'm asking for your recommendation.
I'll wait.
I don't think we can do that.
You need to look and see how, this is just my opinion. I don't know how Three Mile came about, but there had to be an ordinance or something where we took that over.
To take over the streets, correct.
With Three Mile, I think we had made an agreement for the right of way to the sewer substation.
Well, and we, I, I think part of the difference is, is we also took those streets over and owned them. What I'm, what I'm presenting or what I'm saying is, I think we can at least say, like, look, we'll, we'll plow the roads. Obviously, there'd need to be like a whole harmless agreement or something like that, that Dell would have to draft and that the community would have to agree to. But I think that that's something that we could give them tonight. And then before we agree to ever taking their roads in, that's something that legal can look into.
I don't, I don't think we can, because Brad.
Come on, one time, guys. Brad wants to hold off on that, Dylan, if you'd rather look at it first.
Insurance and area, I mean, we're going to have to look at this as a broad picture. We just can't go up there and start plowing. I mean, I understand where you're coming from and I appreciate your concern. I just want to make sure.
We want to help you, but we want to make sure that we're doing it right. Somebody goes up there and tears up a curve or something.
Exactly.
We're going to be responsible, or you guys are going to be responsible?
We just fixed one at Three Mile Ridge.
Well, you know, you drive pickup trucks with plows, when we have to hire people to do it, they drive the same thing.
Well, we had one, Three Mile Ridge had an incident two years ago, so.
I got a motion on the floor by Mr. Roulette, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett, all, all in favor?
What was the motion?
To take it under advisement?
Take it under advisement.
And let legal counsel and Mr. Massey look into it as well.
Which is only the fair thing.
Yeah.
We still talk about, this is the only fair thing, because this is under the comment situation. I wish you guys would have got it on the agenda and we could have studied this before the meeting. And we'd know more about what's going on.
Can we have a timeframe, like having them come back to the next meeting? Is that fair?
I don't know.
Yeah. So there is timeframe for the next meeting, add that to the motion.
I'm sure if legal counsel has the time to look into it. I'm sure if legal counsel has the time to look into it, I'd like to review what they did back in, when was it, when they took over Three Mile?
It wasn't that long ago.
27, was it, and that was in Dennis Carr's administration.
So... No. It was actually that.
It was...
Nah, I believe it was Mr. Carr's.
I think Tommy's right, it was in Dennis's.
I would like to look at that documentation on how they did that as well, so...
So...
How long is this advisement period going to take, from now until next year?
Well, and that's why I would like for you, yeah, that's why I'm hoping, I, I would say, get on the agenda for the next meeting, that should give Dell enough time to look into this, and then two weeks.
Okay.
So, our next me, our meetings are on the first and third Monday.
Okay.
Well, wouldn't be better off, instead of pushing it that fast, just wait a month, it isn't like we're gonna, you're gonna get snow, so let's give it, let's give it a month, and then let's come back. That gives us time to know something.
If we don't have an answer by the next meeting, we can just continue on to the next.
Yeah, but what if they don't want to come back after two, three meetings?
Yeah.
I'm sure they will.
That's up to them.
As long as it ain't pouring down snow, now, I have a motion on the floor, and I got it all in favor.
Aye.
Against, don't you dare.
They said it was fair, um...
Okay. Motion passed. We will look into it, guys, and, and come back to the next meeting, and...
We, we get caught up between ourselves sometimes, but I think as a whole, we are interested in helping, so...
We do want to help.
We just want to make sure we're gonna do it the right way.
If you got it on the agenda first, we would be prepared for this, right now, you just kinda...
Andrew threatened us by not voting.
Yeah. Well, we...
That's...
That was a good line. Yeah, I worked, worked in well.
So, we can do it without...
All right, let's move on to reviewing the special claims for board approval.
Was there any other comments?
Oh, any other comments? I'm sorry.
No comments? Excuse me, no comment?
No, um, no, I don't think I have any comments.
I'm just checking.
It was a lovely car show over the weekend.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yes, it was.
I, I know Logan typically hits the meeting after, or maybe it's two meetings after, it came the last time.
We were down the other end.
But, but even with sketchy weather, to have that kind of turnout is just a testament to the man and the event that Logan's created, that's...
It was great.
Wait, wait just a minute, would you repeat that one more time, please?
I said, that was a fantastic speech you made, unfortunately, we were the other end, and we couldn't hear it.
No, really? Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
That's why it was...
They called me too late.
Now, on to the review and discussion of claims for board approval.
So moved.
Motion by Tommy, second.
Second, sir.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Lenny, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
We're ready for adjournments.
So moved.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
I want to go and beat me today.
Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks for coming.